He officially resigns at midnight.
Oh, okay.
Right, sir, you're on.
Okay. Well, it is six o'clock, shall we? Okay, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and bring our city council meeting to order for this Monday, February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see the other flag flying there, too. Okay. If we have councillor Winter, oh no, there is, ha, speaking, he shall appear, all right, excellent. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and do roll call real quick. Councillor Lindner.
Here.
Councillor Cutterson.
Here.
Councillor Myers.
Here.
Councillor Williams.
Here.
Councillor Winter.
Here.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Uh, let's see, we'll go ahead and dive right in. Uh, can I get a councillor to read two dot one before we do public comments? Would you like to read it?
Sure.
Great, thank you.
The public comment period is designed to gain input from the public. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue between the council, staff, and any person making a comment. Any person who raises a question during public comment should rest assured that the city staff is making a note of your question, and the council and staff will work together to identify the appropriate city official to follow up with you directly.
Thank you. All right, do you have any public comments this evening? Why don't you come on up and we'll turn a microphone on for you and then we'll have you identify yourself. Thank you, Steve.
Hi.
Hi there.
I'm Michelle Bogay Emmett, and I am a member of the South Benton Firewise Committee.
Okay.
And on Saturday, March twenty ninth, the South Benton Firewise Committee will be hosting an event at the Alpine Community Center. The purpose of this event are inform rural landowners about programs available to them to help reduce their vulnerability to wildfire, including grants that will help pay for fuel reduction work. Encourage them to subscribe to the Lynn Benton Alerts Emergency Notification System. Give them an opportunity to sign up with the Monroe Rural Fire Department, excuse me, Protection District, to participate in the home assessment program. Meet local first responders and tour the fire station. Express our appreciation for the service of our first responders. And obtain materials that will help them to prepare for fire season, including creating emergency go kits, evacuation procedures, and general information about emergency services. Some of those are the things that I've passed around. Also create an opportunity for socializing with other rural landlords and community members. All are welcome at the event. A free lunch will be served, and there will be a presentation by Chief Barnes, followed by a panel discussion and Q and A, provided there is no fire call out.
Right, of course.
And if there is, we'll have the opportunity to watch our first responders respond.
Yes.
Can you share again the date, Saturday, June twenty ninth?
March?
March twenty nine? Thank you.
Wonderful.
I, I noticed also that there's an event, um, this, I think it's coming up this weekend, I think it sent, sent it to you for preparedness that's happening at the Long Tom Grange. Are you guys gonna be at that as well?
I wasn't aware of it.
Okay. I'll try to get you that information.
Okay.
So. It might be another good opportunity for you to.
Pass around some more.
Share some more, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So much. Important topic.
To that, to that, to the record.
Okay, any other comment or? Public comments, there we go. Come on over, John.
Thank you, thank you for your time. It's inappropriate and a public comment period, but I, I just, I wanted to, um, kind of clarify and go over, uh, some statements made at the last working session, um, just to make sure there's clarity and, and, and ongoing trust. These comments were made about eleven thirty-five work and the, and my role with that group. And to be honest, I was taken kind of by surprise and unexpected, and, uh, the best I could do was to apologize if there's any assumption of misunderstanding, you know, mis, mis, whatever. And, uh, um, and take full responsibility for that. I did have time to go back and look at minutes, look at notes, and, um, try to figure out what, what the implications, the concerns were. And, um, I think since it was a public meeting, it's on the public record. I don't know what will be in the minutes, but there's a need to kind of respond and clarify for the council, you know, as we move forward. So it was the, a couple comments were made. And I think the first item was possibly some inappropriate, um, public meeting law. So, okay, so to touch on those points, first, this was not an, uh, subcommittee that was concerned as a working group. That's kind of important to keep in mind when you're looking at this. It was a working group with a very, very specific goal, which was based on the city council's recommendation for public outreach thing. The goal of that group was to build visuals and a format for that public outreach meeting. The working group was, uh, well, commissioned to rely solely on existing material that the advisory committee had pulled together and had, you know, already vetted with you and with the advisory committee. Uh, there's no new work undertaken in any way. There were four people that signed up from the advisory group to participate in that, me being one of those. We were able to, um, entice Commissioner Nielsen to join us because, as you all know, I'm a narrative guy. And Commissioner Nielsen is a visual guy, and this was a visual presentation, so we're very thankful we could join in that. I checked back and emails went out to all four people who signed up for that working group every time we had a meeting. Not everybody could attend, a lot of busy schedules. Once we got through the planning and kind of the overall idea, uh, we were sit down with, um, Commissioner Thielson and create, start creating the visuals and, and the format for that meeting. Before I shared that material back to the working group and, um, advisory committee, and hence to, to see, to the council, um, we met with the Longtown Watershed Council and with Elliot, shared that material with Elliot. I want to make sure everything in there was accurate as far as our partners were concerned before I shared it, and I don't have to go back and change things and come back. One of those meetings took place locally in town. That was not a working group meeting. It was myself and, and the Longtown Watershed folks and, and, uh, Commissioner Thielson, to go over the material to make sure it was accurate before it was vetted by everybody. I mean, at that meeting, I think, um, there were other people in there, and there may have been some misunderstanding of what, what the purpose of that meeting was. Okay, it was not a working group meeting, it was a work, the working group was a working group, um, with a very specific order, no new business, and, was everything that was produced by that working group was gonna be vetted and shared by the advisory committee and then back to the city council. My understanding in two thousand twenty-three that that exempted from public meeting law. And, and not that I'm trying to skirt anything, it's just that I considered that and it seemed very clear that it was a very focused working group. Um, so I want to clarify that to make sure there's no, um, if, if I ever do, or any of us ever do, get miscued on the meetings, we stand to be corrected, and I, I hope we, we do that. A second comment was made about balance, and this really, I'm still quite confused by that. The working group and, and the advisory committee, this, I think, took their work very seriously. The goal of the working group, the goal of the advisory committee was to look carefully at the process and the work of the Army Corps. Share that information and process with the city council, so you were well informed. Look at key concerns that came up, and so the goal was to be thorough and complete. At the end of every advisory committee meeting, I stopped and said, is there any more information required on this subject? Are there any things we're missing? In fact, I came here and asked this group, are there anything we're missing? Do you need any more information? We, we can go back and go to work. So, uh, thorough and complete, I think, is, terms that can be used or criticized. But I, I just want to make sure. Cause there's a lot of work to be done in the next, um, next few weeks. I mean, a lot of really important decisions have to be made by this group. And I would just want to make sure there's clear trust and, and, uh, clarity about that information as it comes forward. And again, if there's any concern, please let us know, we want to address those and take those with all seriousness. So I just want to make sure that's out on the table, public meeting, public record, and I'm just trying to, now that I have my head back on and can consider, I think about this a little bit, I want to make sure it took a minute to clarify that. And that's, and it's all meant in positive, good working relationships that are to go forward. I did share this kind of information with, uh, Steve, with the city administrator and the mayor beforehand, just so we have that available as well. I, I do, I don't know if it's on the agenda, I haven't looked. I can provide a quick update later about kind of some information.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll wait till a little bit later.
New, uh, taking, uh, councilperson's cutters and advice, I'll be here for the next few weeks at any time if, if needed any more updates.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Any other public comments this evening? Okay, we're gonna wrap it up then, and we're gonna move on. So we've got staff reports, and we've got, well, we don't have the sheriff, but it looks like we have. We have Sheriff's Deputy Duffett here, yes?
Yep, you're correct about it, that's.
All right, excellent.
Here whenever my turn is.
So we've got the report, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to it before we look at it.
Are you talking about the monthly report for us?
Yes, sir.
Um, nope, you have the report, uh, it's like about fifty, around a fifty-five hours, um, nothing, uh, uh, too unusual to report. The reason I'm here today is the sheriff was, actually got busy with some other things, wasn't able to make it. I had one of our patrol sergeants who was, uh, planning on coming, uh, down there today, and we got really wrapped up in a lot of down tree calls and down power line calls, and all of our people are out, uh, dealing with those, so I wanted to get on this meeting and, uh, represent, uh, the sheriff's office today, and, uh, I'm here for any questions, but, um, as, uh, for us, uh, it was pretty, uh, business as usual during the month of January.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
I wanted to say that I saw the speed limit thing on territorial this morning when I was walking the dogs, thank you for putting that there. The thing that tells people that they're going more than thirty-five.
No problem. And if, and if you, we're always looking for other, other, uh, other places for that, too, so if, and we know that's a, a, a good place for it, but if there's any other suggestions that, you know, would have a maximum impact that we can put on our list of, uh, areas that we can deploy that, definitely let me know or let us, or the sheriff know, because we'd like to be able to get.
Yeah, orchard would be great.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, we got Orchard in the room, and I'm pretty sure councillor Cutterson would love to have territorial continue.
Oh, yeah, as, as much as you want to, and if you want to be out there to cite any of those going well over that, you're welcome to be out there anytime.
Yeah. Nope. No problems. And, and it definitely is a, it's, it's a tool that we can, we can adjust fairly easily to, so it doesn't just turn into a, a game of, you know, high speed. It'll just give that warning sign, and it also collects data on there, too, so we can kind of go back and see times and try to address some of those things. So I'm sure you know that, but it's, uh, just one of those things to address, and, yeah, I'd be happy to, to move it on to Orchard and any other place that you guys see as a, as an area we should focus on, too.
Great.
Thank you, I just have one quick, um, question, and it's maybe more of a comment. I noticed on the tallies for under arrest on the site and, and the custody, it looks like, they don't, I'm not seeing where we have four sites or one custody, am I, am I missing that?
Hmm, well, I, I don't know, I didn't study this fully, so I can't look at it. I, there's, there's a possibility this stuff isn't getting, isn't correctly.
Okay.
Uh, uploading on that, if, is it, is it, is it something that's in the narrative but not meeting the, the, the categories?
Yeah, it looks like there were four sites, but I'm not seeing any, any sites under the arrest column.
Okay, I see.
Okay, so I guess the, the citations under arrest would be just the, and, and I might be saying something you already know, uh, but the arrest on the citation column would be just citing for a crime, and then the citations under traffic or for the, any of the traffic citations.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
It does, yeah, I mean.
The four, the four citations under the arrests look like they would relate to, uh, kind of the bottom of the list, there was a disorderly conduct where two people were cited for, um, disorderly conduct, and then there's a, it looks like a site for the, uh, looks like harassment, and then one for a war, warrant arrest, those are, those are all, are criminal sites, and then any other of the, um, under the traffic sites, are, let's see.
Those look, I can see where those are coming from, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Yep, and any other issues that you see at any other month? And for those who don't know me, I'm the patrol captain, uh, so I'm in charge of our day-to-day patrol functions, uh, for the sheriff's office, too, so any other comments, good or bad, or things that, you know, you could see that we could do better or address more effectively, um, can be funneled my way to, and the best we can serve you is what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have the city administrator's report.
Well, thank you, um, since I think a lot of what I am, I have a lot of talking tonight, so, uh, instead of trying to wrap those up in a report, we'll just report on those as we move along.
Okay.
What I will say is that, uh, this last month has gone by incredibly quickly, I'm not sure how we got to another, um, city council meeting. Staff, this last month has been, from my end of it, it's been spent doing a lot of mentoring and training with, uh, our new administrative assistant, and finishing up, um, I'm really now just mentoring our utility one who is really, uh, taken to the water plant, um, as I mentioned to you last time, but, I, I'm incredibly pleased that I have a person who finally is here that can, uh, feels not just comfortable but excited about water as much as I have been.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, that's really good. The downside of that for us is, uh, that we'll get into is, is, you know, as I've mentioned, forty percent of my salary comes from, uh, two proprietary funds, um, and those are water and sewer. And so as I exit out of having operational control of those areas, it stands to reason that my percentage of time in those areas, therefore salary, also is reduced as well. So that not only just impacts myself, but it also impacts anyone you wish to hire, because at this point, if sixty percent, for instance, which comes out of general administration, which is our general funds, which is really the only fund, uh, the city has available to it, um, that's not restricted in some way, shape, or form, that would be a salary of around sixty thousand dollars a year. So the challenge at this point is to find additional funding or come up with alternatives for how this might work, you know, so right now you have a halftime salary, whether, you know, uh, but to go up to where I am currently, um, you would need to have a footprint, really, within that, uh, within this, within the public works area. So I've been struggling with that, that's been a huge part of my time the last few weeks is to how to make that work. In my discussion with our check-in, the mayor and I check in periodically. This brings us back full circle to two thousand eighteen, um, when this was an issue with my predecessor. How do you fund that position? When that position doesn't have a footprint in public works? And so that's the struggle. It's, um, um, as you will see a little later here, the auditor, um, basically said proprietary funds are proprietary funds, keep them separate. So, um, th- that is where we're at, is how do we make up that difference? And how do we move forward, um, with all the good works the city has done? But by the same token, it really is your general fund, and your general fund only comes from property taxes. So it doesn't come, you know, we, in other words, you, the water, sewer, storm, streets, um, all of those have to be directed towards those activities. So you're limited without raising taxes or coming up with another source of funds as to how to fully fund this position, the way I think that you'd like to. So that's been a, a concern, I think that really, um, to look at this and open it up, um, we really do need a budget committee meeting, not just a, you know, from that, this, I, we talked about supplemental, but supplementals are different. Supplementals are just basically saying I have an expense more than I have here, and I have some money over here, we need to make it all work, right? It isn't about finding extra money, our, our system is, we, the analysis that I just completed, um, a few hours ago, um, is that the amount of revenue that we're bringing in matches up pretty much with our expenses, I mean, up to this point, I mean, up to the end of January. So we're not overspending anything. By the same token, the margins are very slim, a few thousand dollars. And that in a budget of over, when you have a cash account over two million, a few thousand dollars is really nothing, it's very, very, very slim. So we are just operating, we don't have any extra, and that's really, and that's really how it's always been. I'm not gonna say this is anything dramatic. The city's been struggling with this, I think councillor Myers and councillor Cutterson, um, Mayor Sheets, those that have been in the system in watching, this is not a new topic, uh, at all, we struggle with making things work, councillor.
Clarifying question, can the time, the percentage of time that you spend supervising the utility workers be attributed to that budget?
Not forty percent, maybe a small portion of it, and, and that, and, and you have asked the question that was asked six years ago.
Okay.
Okay, and what happens is, is that, yes, but then what happens is that money gets taken. See, my forty percent was because we only had two people, myself and Mark. So I filled in for an essential person that we didn't hire. So now we have a second person that's filling in that spot, and now is becoming fully trained and, you know, has signed off to operate the water plant. You can't pay for three, we don't have money for three people.
They're working autonomously.
They're doing, they're working autonomously on that, my role now is general supervision.
Okay.
Right, I mean, I'm just the supervisor, even though I do have that ex, experience.
Right, it's not your role anymore.
It's not, I don't have what I call a footprint within that fund anymore. It's not. I don't have what I call a footprint within that fund anymore. So yes, you could probably take a few percent, five percent or something of that, but but not forty percent.
Okay.
That's really it. And that's and that's the struggle. That is exactly the question that was asked in two thousand seventeen and eighteen.
Okay.
Because how do we make this work?
Got it. Thank you.
So I I'm I that we will hit the supplemental, we'll hit other things, but I just tha- that has been my activities this last month.
Yeah.
Uh, is to try to help figure this out, bring some clarity, if you will, to to what the situation is.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, let's plow forward, shall we? It'll this will come up again.
Yes, we 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 have several things in here that are related.
All right, we're gonna uh go ahead and go to the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If any item involves a potential conflict of interest, council members should so note before adoption of the consent agenda. A motion to accept the consent agenda is appropriate.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda from the last meeting.
I'll second that.
First and a second, any questions or comments? Anybody need more time?
Do I need to rephrase it as approval of bills, financials and minutes or is consent agenda? Okay.
I think consent agenda is fine. I'm ready. Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and vote. Counselor Winter.
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Cutbutsen?
Yes.
And Counselor Lindner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Uh, we are to resolution twenty twenty five dash oh seven authorization to use to use probably the use of building reserve funds for the reader building removal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will add, we have one additional resolution this evening that I've handed out that uh just came across my desk on Friday. And um, so if if you approve, add that to the agenda.
Okay, I do approve. That's fine. All right.
So oh seven is uh basically this is uh our reader building. Now, I apologize. I've looked in our our references. Is this spelled R E E D E R or R E A D E R?
Don't know. I was like.
I have a letter from a Mr. Reader from a long time ago that I found.
Yeah.
So I apologize if it's R E E D E R to anyone who's listening.
Here's do you have a do you recall?
No, I always thought it was R E A D E R.
Yeah.
I like, I don't know.
I don't either. So but I I that's how I did because I actually have a letter from way back when.
Okay.
So.
We'll just stick with that for now until corrected otherwise.
So essentially what this is is uh we have the bids uh to demolish it. Mr. Nelson of Harrisburg uh came in with the low bid for that for both the destruction, removal and all that. Uh, of the whole complex. We also had a bid with this uh for uh asbestos. We is we're we are required to have an asbestos. We we require that. The state requires it. Uh, just to make sure that they don't throw any of that into the air. And so this will get the land completely prepped and ready for a modular unit.
Okay.
So that's what twenty 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 five oh seven does.
So about twelve thousand for the demolition itself. Surveys four hundred and forty two, property surveys eighteen fifty, and then some contingencies built.
Right, eleven thousand seven ninety four forty two is the except is the low bid for that.
Okay.
Uh, property surveys eighteen fifty, that's been done by um we noted on the survey that the back fence, whoever put that in is actually five foot on our side, not five foot on the other. It should be five foot back. Those property lines are not, and I, as North Star told us, well, welcome to Monroe. That's just how the property lines are down here. Uh, we we do use North Star because they have a lot of experience with these weird property lines. And I have that background that help us figure things out. And then there's five hundred dollars for contingency. Um, okay, but we don't think that that's an issue. We think that what you see there is, you know, those are hard numbers.
Okay.
It looks like there was a a possibility of trading the Tiger mower for a lower cost. We decided not to go with that one.
We decided not to because that opens up some doors and uh public funds into transparency.
Okay.
Doing, you know, what they really want us to do is put it out on bid at public auction. Um, and so when you start doing that, it it gets those things of backdoor deals and we didn't want to go down.
Yeah, as a city, that's not a good, not a good idea.
Any other comments, questions regarding the bid?
And we're sure we've got this in the budget and it'll be okay and it's not going to hurt us for anything else possibly upcoming.
We're pulling this from our building reserve and not from our operational budget.
Okay, good.
So yes, you are depleting your building reserve. And there is no that I can see there is very little funds going into the building reserve. Um, we just don't have the money to do that. So whatever we use out of building reserve is out of building reserve. It will.
How much will be left after we do this?
Um, with the entire process of zero.
Okay. All right, then.
You owe you.
Just the removal. That's not putting the new.
No, that includes the whole thing, including the modular unit.
And that's what the building reserve is for.
Right.
It's for maintaining and fixing or replacing buildings.
Right. We're we're trading um going into next year with the there will be some money available to start putting back into building reserve from some monies that we use from library.
Okay.
So that's the hope and that's that'll be part of the supplemental as well as to make sure that we can put those those monies back in here.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty five dash oh seven, a resolution authorizing the use of funds for demo demolition of the city building known as the reader building.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions regarding this resolution? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote then. Counselor Lindner?
Yes.
Counselor Cutbutsen?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
And then Counselor Winter?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to resolution twenty twenty five dash oh eight, authorization to use street reserve street reserve funds or for manhole repair on Fifth Street. If I can spit that out, we'd be in great.
So this is the manhole that everyone tries to avoid just as you're leaving town going north. Um, ODOT wants us to fix it. And we argued, we talked, and we were told by competent authorities, fix it.
And it was their resurfacing that caused the issue?
Yeah, well, no, it's actually sunk.
Oh, it sank?
Yeah, sank. It was flush and it sank. And so those issues are considered city, those utilities are considered city utilities. I will say we we put a good fight up. But ODOT was very nice and very kind, but insistent. And so we double checked and um.
That our whole pipe system system over there sink?
We checked it and it's and and we believe, yes, that's part of the problem is that it but we also think that part of the riser that was put on there was not correct. So when you set those in place, you you get it up as close as you can, make it flush. And but over time, as you, let's say you repave.
Right.
Okay, you'll have a two to four inch. You can buy them in different. They're just circles. Just called risers. It used to goes on top of the existing manhole, but your cover on top of that. It does not appear that that happened. It appeared that they fixed, they put some concrete around it and then put the manhole cover on top of that, which of course that concrete doesn't do very well. And they should have put a riser on there. And so that's what appeared to have happened. The same thing happened over by on the Dairy Mart area when we repaired those those uh storm drains, same same issue. It was over there. They just simply were not set, set correctly. So we're going to uh go in the middle of the road or H and J will go out in the middle of the road. We we just simply can't do that. We don't have the resources um to be out in the middle road cutting and doing that.
I presume they're gonna be during daytime hours, right?
Yes.
And or do we have any kind of um bypass for traffic?
At this point, what they'll do is they will route, they will have flaggers.
One lane.
And they'll do one lane. And they're going to basically mobilize so that when they do it, they can get it, they'll move off to the side, prep it, move out into middle street, do it and get out.
Any idea how long it'll take them to?
They believe it's a two hour job.
Okay.
And it's not gonna be around school hours where they're getting in and out.
That's what we said. Let's make sure that it's not early in the morning.
In the morning commute.
Between three or five in the afternoon. They're aware that probably the sweet spot is either between ten and noon and, you know, one and three, and that's about where you're at.
Yeah, if it's one and three, it's gotta be done before three.
Yeah, because by three o'clock.
Yeah.
Mayhem.
Yes. And during lunch hour, you have a lot of traffic going back and forth. We all know.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Let me try and hit that sweet spot and get it done. And now they're gonna do a diamond cut on it, which is the better cut for that um type of work. Put a riser in, repair it, fill it back in with asphalt, not with concrete.
Right.
And um
Yeah.
will be done.
That hourly rate, oof, two thousand two hundred and twenty five dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what it is.
People.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, they they have to, yeah.
Yeah, they've got to be saved.
For one guy. That's like for all the guys.
What they will do is they will have a crew of six people there.
Wow.
Not including the flaggers.
Okay.
And they will move in, move out and be done.
Right.
Right.
They have to have any confined space issue, anybody going down?
We we don't think so. We've already checked it and it appears as though it's it's just wasn't properly done to begin with. They feel like you can come in and cut it out, put a riser in.
So they don't have to enter.
Enter it for that, right? If they do, they are fully confined space. Uh, H and J does all of our emergency work here. So.
Okay, I'm entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution resolution number twenty twenty five dash oh eight, a resolution authorizing use of funds for street repair.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay. All right, Counselor Winter, you're up first.
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Cutbutsen?
Yes.
And Counselor Lindner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, what is next? Okay, review uh memorandum of understanding for the SBCEA for library services until June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. We have that in front of us right here.
Yes, that's a separate uh document.
Yep.
Um, this is separate that the quick claim deed for this um came in the mail this morning.
Awesome.
Okay.
I got it all together for you.
All right. So it includes janitorial services?
Mm hmm. Yes, sir.
Because the audience is probably really excited to watch us read.
Yes.
So yes, would you like me to just give you a quick overview?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. So what we're doing is the city agrees to provide basic janitorial services for the library building, um, which includes the basics that we currently already do, which is sweeping and mopping of common floor areas is required. The common floors, that long hallway and the lobby area, that's what we call common. Um, basic dusting of areas reachable without ladders or stools. So we're not going up with anything high with this. Um, the restrooms, uh periodic vacuuming, a periodic vacuuming carpeted areas, primarily the entrance areas to the main library. Um, and staff areas, uh trash removal from the bins, uh but we're not, we don't remove cardboard boxes. We just we remove the trash that are in things are and general cleaning and meeting rooms. Then in addition to janitorial services, the city shall be responsible for the utility payments, uh payment management of all necessary utilities associated with the building up through January thirtieth. Alarm service, uh required inspections, which at this point I believe are all completed uh for that. That's the required inspections for that are your back backflow devices and your in your fire sprinklers. Uh, those are all required inspections. Um, and and fire extinguishers. We will uh do minor maintenance such as and by example gutter cleaning, HVAC filters, we still we have back HVAC filters still available to us. Um, and then light bulb replacement for those that we don't have more than eight foot ladder. Um, so in other words, not doing the ones that are way up there at the very top.
Okay.
Those are those have been problematic from day one. I don't think anyone uses those. Which is unfortunate. I did let Mr. Irwin know that um Irwin know that uh Energy Trust Oregon um is right now is offering free coal fluorescent light CFLs to LEDs because the state of Oregon is banning CFLs as of end of June of this year. So um, make sure and they'll do that free. So that's something they should take advantage of.
Definitely.
We also agree that um other services may be contracted on a cost basis with the city of Monroe. They have asked if there's situations where they need public work staff and we have availability that uh we would uh provide that at cost. They would pay us to do that.
Did we agree on a a rate for that? Or would it just be, I mean, like it, would it be by the hour for the utility worker? Or does it really just?
Well, we do have an established rate of ninety dollars an hour.
Okay, got it.
Uh, the duration is uh uh remain in effect until June thirtieth of twenty twenty five, unless it's extended by mutual agreement, but I believe that uh is what we wanted to do. City of Monroe will do its things. The city, the SBCEA will uh cooperate, make sure we have access to the building, which we do. There's no issue there. Uh, promptly notify and inform the city of any issues or needed repairs beyond the scope um so that we're not caught in any issues or or miscommunications. Uh, provide us feedback, which they do in case we, you know, something's missed or they're concerned about something. And then um I'm asking them to provide guidelines for you submitting rooms, including requirements for returning rooms to original state prior to use. Now, the reason for that is because we're kind of in a middle limbo state with the city of Gravellis's uh library services and ourselves. And we just want to make sure that there's communication. In other words, things go exactly the way they have been, where there there is an expectation that the rooms get returned to their to their prior state so that our staff aren't spending twelve hours cleaning up a mess, which again, this is what has been going on. It's not there's been nothing that we noticed or Ron has told us anything has been unusual or extraordinary. So I just want to, and I don't expect that to occur the next four months. Uh, the rest of this is the usual boilerplate, um general purpose boilerplate modifications, termination, dispute resolution. And um usual miscellaneous and signatures. So that's that's an S. It's very simple. It's not a we're not, we're not, is it what I believe we've all talked about and uh uh at least in an oral agreement, thought that this is what was appropriate uh through the end of June.
And through the end of June, so we're in this agreement and then on July first, the building becomes theirs solely to operate and maintain. This is we're just providing this service for a few months until they're kind of on their feet and then it becomes their responsibility.
Exactly. And uh that and the reason why we have the MOU is because the second part of this is the statutory quick claim deed, which our lawyer prepared uh for us um to turn the building over back to them.
Awesome. Awesome.
So the MOU allows us to continue our work in the building. While the ownership of the building transfers back to the SBCEA.
So that makes, so their insurance kicks in. We are no longer liable for those things. We're strictly maintenance and then helping to pay the utilities until June.
Right, per, per the, per the MO, for this, what I just read, exactly. So there's no um, and, and they do have insurance. They have secured insurance for this. Our insurance, of course, is still, you know, we paid for it. So as we noted, that is a, as soon as this quick claim deed is done and filed, CIS will cancel that insurance with the civic hometown.
Okay.
So we're done in that respect.
Great. I mean, I, I think that this served everyone's desires outcome wise. I know that um the SBCEA was really interested in having ownership of the building again, or they, or that was what, what I interpreted.
Yes.
Um, I think this is a win-win for everybody.
It seems like this is a nice resolution to what initially appeared to be a very contentious and dead end.
Yeah.
No win situation for anybody.
Yeah. Yeah.
And this turned out to be, I think, a good win.
Yeah, for everybody.
So does uh SBCEA need to review this before we approve it?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
And so I will give it to, uh as, as long, you know, at this point, we've already passed a resolution stating that we're gonna do this. This you wanted to see before we sent to SBCEA. So at this point, if there's any changes or anything, it's on, you know, if you see anything needs to be changed. Uh with this before it gets sent on to Mr. Irvin, um then he will sign it, then we'll sign it, and.
Do you need an approval vote, basically, to document that we?
I think that would be probably appropriate that you, uh this is not a resolution, but it is a council approval that you see this. And you wish us to proceed with signatures and completion of this uh MOU.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we uh agree to this memorandum of understanding between the city of Monroe and South Benton Community Enhancement. For library maintenance services as presented to us. That what we're doing is presenting this to the SBCEA. Um for their feedback and hopefully approval.
I'll second, but I, I, I'm looking forward to the discussion piece because I have a thought about it.
Well, here we are, we're in the discussion piece now.
Discussion piece, so I um. I wonder if we might be able to still provide other services on a contracted basis if they need it. I don't want them to be up a creek after June thirtieth. I, I mean, maybe they could hire some third party contractor in the valley, but if we've already developed this relationship with them. Granted, I, we don't really have the bandwidth to, to provide ad hoc utility care, but maybe once in a while, if they're like, hey, we've got this backed up toilet. We really need help. Can we still provide assistance?
I, I, I really don't see an issue with that. I think that if we're going to ongoing, we can certainly, um and this becomes something that they desire.
If they want it.
If they want to, then I think the city could enter into a standalone agreement to provide.
I, I would think that would be a new one, a new memorandum.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
I mean, it's a great idea, but I mean, and this does, this does say that we can extend it, but.
But then I think, I see what you're saying. July first could be, we can discuss that separately.
Yeah.
Basically, just a, 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 like a professional services agreement.
Okay.
Where you say.
Right.
You know, for this, we, we agree to provide these services. Here's the cost of those. You agree.
If you want them.
If you want them, you agree that, you know, this is at cities' bandwidth, if you will.
Right.
You know, at, at our um discretion.
Yeah.
We'd have to have terms for scheduling and things like that.
Right, exactly, that, that we will. So you know, that would be the separate agreement. At this point, we're, we're trying to be helpful.
Yeah, right.
Perfect. And, and I think too, we need to be a little bit careful that we don't end up being like a contractor service going down the road as well. Because that's not, and then if we provide it for one, one business or one nonprofit, then what about this other one that needs it? And so I think we just need to be careful, only because we only have a few people. We don't.
Two utility workers.
Yeah, and we've got a lot of city work that needs to be done, so watch and where are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now they have to go do the grade school.
At this point, I do have Ron Hockett, and that fills in, but after June thirtieth, I don't.
Yeah, okay.
So that's the other point. I, I can't afford to do that right now because I, I have that extra bandwidth.
Right.
To help out with those things, but after that point, I don't have it, so.
Yeah, right.
And the city needs those utility workers to focus on other activities.
Definitely. Thanks for the discussion.
All right, we've got a first and a second. We've discussed. We're ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, councillor Linder.
Yes.
Councillor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Okay, councillor Myers.
Yes.
Councillor Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Winter. Councillor Winter.
Yes, please. You've been disappeared.
It's all right, no worries. Thank you. Okay, very good. All right, let's move on. See. So I'm assuming the quick claim is part of this, so we can go ahead and move forward.
Part, we can move forward with that.
Okay, so we've got the review, the franchise agreement for spectrum charter communications next on the agenda.
So this is uh, you had a presentation last meeting from saying that they're coming through town. They would be willing to um basically at no cost to the city uh put in their fiber optics. What they provide is full spectrum of, of services, including cable, television, streaming services, all of that. It is something that they are willing to put in, and if people wish to use it, they can sign up. If not, they don't. So of course, the devil is always in the details. We know that. We do have a franchise agreement with Monrotel uh for telephone services and um internet. It is a non-exclusive agreement. These can be complimentary in, in many ways. Uh folks can say what they have. I'm sure that all the homes with dish antennas might feel. That this might be a better service if they get cable to their houses for that purpose rather than dish antennas. I don't know. I've had all of, all of the above. I like cable better than dish, but that's okay. It, it, it worked too. So the question at this point is, would you uh like to move ahead with entertaining a franchise? This is not something, this is not a committal to do it, at the next step would be that the franchise agreement has to be written up. As the gentleman mentioned, they have armies of attorneys that review these things. I smile, I was, before I, my, my entry into government was as the cable commissioner. When TCI Cable put fiber optics into Cravallis, so I did both Cravallis and Albany. I was the, the commish. So I learned all about cable and franchise agreements. However, at that point, it needs to come back to you for, for discussion. Probably, I would say, public feedback and approval. But at this point, if you're not interested, that's fine. If you are, then I start, we start the process. They, they, of course, have boilerplates. I do too. And we will give them what we have that is uh consistent with our franchise agreements and our ordinances that we have with. Monroe Hotel.
I support exploring.
Yeah, I do too. The one thing I, I would, I'd like to kind of answer the question in my mind is that. They'll bring it through, we can give them a franchise, but the connections don't have to happen right away. There's, or is there, there's no set period of saying, oh, you have to connect with us in six months or?
Okay, no, it is basically, they're gonna put the cable in town, and then they will hook up as people ask for those services. Now, in some cases, what will happen is, is that they will bring it to a pole or to a. Uh a point where they will then at, say councillor Myers says, I want that cable, but it's over on Seventh Street. So what they'll do is they'll need to bring it down depot, that stub to your house. So they would be coming to us and saying, we're gonna be digging, just as Monroe Tel does now.
Or down Pine and though.
Right, yeah, right. Now, the other part of this is, I'll just.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add one thing. The franchise fees are about five percent. That's, it's been capped though in recent years. I've learned that, that the rules and regulations have, have changed quite a bit from the ninety-six. Telecommunications Act. However, we can request, and I will request, a, a public channel. This is called PEG, Public Education and Government. This was a big thing back when, when you could have television cameras and, and they would be required to provide a studio and all sorts of interesting things. Along with them. However, having the ability to stream council meetings on TV on a channel. Monroe. And also for the high school, to be able to do the same thing is, it gives the high school. Students and government transparent, I mean, that's huge.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's huge, and they can do that. So that would be part of the franchise. What they would do is they would take part of that franchise fee. Help pay for those extra channels, but it'd be like one or two percent. So.
Right.
But again, you're getting that, that's part of the negotiations, but you're getting some extra value.
Yeah.
That would be really great for Monroe to have.
That's great. So just so I understand, since we don't know what the cost would be to residents, residents have the option. They can still, they can stick with Monroe Tel if they prefer it. They are not obligated to go with.
No, they're not, and they could stick with their dish and tennis.
Okay.
It just gives more options.
Options for people.
More competition that are.
Right.
Pricing for us, I hope.
Yeah, hopefully.
So.
And they feel at this point, they're coming through town. This is paid for. Keeps their staff employed.
They're going all the way up to New Bern, oh Dallas.
So Dallas is a, is a fiber optics connection. It's actually part of a loop where two um fiber optics networks.
Oh.
Intersect. There's a uh, it's actually control of, operated by MyNet, Monroe, something internet. And uh so they, they have that network up there. It also is part of the loop that the Southwest Oregon Research Corridor. Which is the one that comes down Highway ninety-nine that Monroe Tel taps into. That heads all the way down across Flama Pass to um Spring River.
Wow.
Which is a, no, I, I, I actually have some property up that way, but it's the middle of nowhere. Literally, the middle of nowhere. So, but that's where the Century Tel link comes up, and that's what feeds. The Google Plex comes at the Google Plex from the Dells. And these prime bills.
Okay.
Giant, or Apple, and I mean, they, they have, their buildings combined are about twice as big as Monroe. Just the buildings.
And it hums at night, you can hear it.
Yes.
It's weird.
Yeah, it's very interesting out there. Anyway, so this is, this, this connection will connect, provides additional, actually more redundancy. Not just for this network, but also for um Peak.
Yeah.
Comcast and Monroe Tel.
Cool.
So it, it, they're connecting another loop to this, so that's, that's also good.
Yeah.
Official.
So I'm hearing the majority at council would like.
I will contact them and we will start the negotiation process.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's exciting.
Again, you will have to approve the franchise. That's, that's our ordinance.
Let's go ahead and slide in resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine. That's.
Okay.
Resolution accepting audit findings in response to deficits noted in the audit.
So this audit is not this last year, it's actually the year before.
Okay.
Okay. And so it says two deficiencies. The first deficiency, I think, is very obvious. That was the previous year's audit, right? The second one is dealing with what we've been talking about, which is proprietary funds. We actually have been, whereas you know, the first thing we did was we moved our water system into its own enterprise fund, so we could figure out what it costs. A gallon of water. We have then been moving things through that process. However, streets and stormwater cannot be in public works. They're proprietary funds. They cannot, we weren't, they weren't public works. The state does not like that. So they had to be moved. So we did, when you approved the budget this year. And they're all in their own separate funds, we're tracking them separately. In doing that, we had to make a huge amount of changes in our system. Coupled with the fact the auditor was, changed businesses. They went to a different company. We had delays in that. I think Dawn has done a fantastic job of coming up to speed on this, but she also, you know, nothing like learning by trial by fire, I guess. Uh we also improved, dramatically improved how we coordinate our activities upfront. And this is one reason why we have administrative assistant, so that we can start with the low level things. By putting our checks, our transactions in by the administrative assistant, which is then. Has oversight of Dawn, which then comes to me for review and finally to you. So we now have four layers of, of work in the system, not just two. This is one of the issues you come up with when you only have a few people there, is you don't have that level of looking at things twice. To make sure that things happen correctly. The other part is, we work really hard with Springbrook to make sure that our journal entries go in the way we want them to go in. Which, again, this is fixing things, uh going back to two thousand eighteen, actually. Just making sure that the so- software works the way we want to. So um in essence, we fixed the issue going forward. We fixed it um completely as of, of June of this last year. And we have everything now into the auditor for this previous year's audit. And we expect that to go far smoother and uh in place. We actually have everything done, ready to go. Dawn now has audit boxes all set up, uh so that everything is done and ready. We also have spent a huge amount of time scanning. Uh material in, so that this material can go immediately and not, then there's no delays. There's no trying to find it in boxes. So this effort, we started a few years ago, as you recall, with uh getting scanning has really paid off in this year. So um I feel that we've come a long way in making sure that our funds are the way they're supposed to be. The deficiency is, is that stormwater and streets, um which receive funds. That were dedicated to storm, and the streets gets money from the state of Oregon. And the state of Oregon wants those funds separated. They don't want them commingled. Even though we accounted for them correctly, they need to be in separate funds.
Great.
Okay.
So there you go.
Now we know.
Long and the short of it.
Okay.
Or there's longer and the shorter.
All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh nine. A resolution accepting audit findings and response to deficiencies noted in the audit.
I'll second.
Gonna fight for it.
Comments or questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Uh councillor Winter.
Yes.
Councillor Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Myers.
Yes.
Councillor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
And councillor Linder.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next. This is a favorite topic. Cascades West Area Commission on Transportation Committee Appointments.
Otherwise known as.
C WAC.
C WAC, yes. Well, I was gonna put the acronym on the agenda, and then like, everybody be like, what the heck is that? So I went ahead and spelled it out. Anyway, um, we talked about this in work session. Currently councillor Cuthbertson is the primary, and councillor Linder, I believe you're the secondary. And so we need to actually appoint again. So I'm gonna let you people fight, no, I'm kidding. Because I think we actually need to tell them this week. Who they, who they are. Otherwise, we're gonna get cut out of this process. So.
So we're gonna arm wrestle for it?
Yeah, I'm gonna let you guys.
Also need the, our, the cog person as well, I believe.
Right, for the board of directors.
Yeah.
There we just, we kind of been lumping it together.
Been kind of lumped in there.
Yeah, okay. So we do need a cog person too, so C WAC and cog. Okay.
I attended each and every one of those meetings.
Thank you.
I mean, when I was at the council of governments.
With cog, do we need to have a primary and a secondary as well?
Yeah, it's good to have a backup.
It's good to have a backup.
Okay.
It's good to, you know, and it, you know, the city administrator. It's good to have a backup. It's good to, you know, and it, you know, the city administrator can also be backup for that as well. And that often happens. So if the primary cannot attend, if you don't have a secondary, then the city administrator can fill it.
So, yes.
Can you remind us of the commitment? Is it quarterly or?
I think it's quarterly, isn't it? Every three months?
Yes, and the first one is the twenty seventh.
And are the meetings typically midday or evening?
Um, this month.
This month.
Like in a couple days. Um, let me, I'm looking at it so I can tell you. It's from five to seven at night.
Okay. In Albany?
Uh, it is a hybrid. So you can video. Um, we use teams. So you can use teams or you can go and. I think there it is in Albany this time.
Okay.
Sometimes they move it, but I, it looks, it appears that it's in Albany.
But it sounds like you can.
Instead of Zoom, you can team.
You can teams.
So you don't have to go up to Albany.
Yeah.
So. There's.
I am happy to remain the backup. I do not want to be the primary.
Okay, first.
That's okay. Sorry to be. Like that, but that's how I am.
No, I understand. So the backup on C WAC.
Yeah.
Okay. All points.
Unless somebody wants to fight me for it.
Right.
I'll be the backup to the backup. But I can't be the primary. I, I mean, yeah, my, my schedule won't allow for that.
That leaves me, huh?
Well, then there's also cog. Do we know how frequently cog is cog of the same meeting cycle?
Usually and, but it's been weird and I don't know. And they're, we're just getting ready to do training again. They just sent a thing out. So I don't know, but usually it's the two or three hours before that. So it's a nice five hour long. After.
Our city council meetings are long. Anyway.
Cog is also quarterly.
I think so. It has been, it's just been so.
They, they used to be monthly.
Right.
But then no one was showing up.
It, it's been a lot lately and I believe we're getting a new director as well as the rumor I hear. So I don't even know what's gonna happen after that, to be honest with you. If they're gonna say on the same schedule or what's gonna happen. And I believe I just got a thing saying we're supposed to have training. Coming up for that. So, you know. And, and I've been doing it because I, I think my schedule is probably the most flexible, but. Anybody else who would like to, that'd be great. And if not, that's okay. I mean, I can still. Do, but it, even if people are willing to do backup or take it once in a while, that's really awesome.
I can be backup for cog as well. Unless, it would be great if you wanted to be backup too.
Yeah, I, I can, I can definitely.
Okay.
Okay, you wanna be backup on cog?
Yep.
Okay.
So is it always like the third or fourth week?
Generally, yes.
That's helpful. Okay, for cogs.
Yeah, I mean, they, it had been really set, but recently I don't know what has been going on. Because I don't know if I haven't been getting the notices for it, but I've been getting real sporadic notices for. Different stuff. So it's, I've been a little frustrated with it, trying to figure out what's going on exactly.
Well, I could be the backup to the backup to.
You got it.
I, I mean, I guess we can work as a team and if somebody has to go and fill in. I'm just looking at my schedule because.
I know.
Well, and I could do a thing where if I get the notice, I say. It's this week. If anybody's available, let me know. And if not, I'll just do it or zoom it or team it. But if somebody else could take it or happens to be around, that'd be amazing.
I can definitely work with that.
Yeah, same. So, thank you, Jeannie, or thank you, Counselor Cuthbertson.
All right, so Counselor Cuthbertson on primary for both C WAC and cog. Is that correct?
Yep.
But. And we'll just have a red line and call us down the line.
Yeah.
We will. We'll pick up some slack so you won't.
It would be really awesome.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and appoint Counselor Cuthbertson to be primary for C WAC and for cog. And then Counselor Linder to be secondary for C WAC. And then Counselor Williams as secondary on cog.
And. Can you ever have a second person with you go in person?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I mean, it might be worthwhile for.
If, even if somebody wanted to go and tag along or.
Tag along, yeah.
Part, yeah.
All right, you as the backup to the backup.
Yeah, cause the more of us that kind of know what's going on, it's not, that's not the worst thing ever. So, but we don't want to miss the opportunities because we have a seat on the board right now, which is kind of a big deal. Gives us a little more of a voice. And.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's, it can be really hard because the. Big three run it all the time. And so if we want our issues to be heard.
Fight them.
Taken care of, we gotta be there to. Squeak, squeak.
I know I can't do the twenty seventh this month, so, okay.
And what time's the twenty seventh start?
C WAC is five to seven. And then there's supposed to be, like I said, the training for the cog one. But I don't remember off the top of my head. I'll look and see if I can find it.
Three o'clock.
They sent me something out, but then I don't know what happened.
Feel free to share with the entire group.
Awesome. It was League of Oregon. No, it wasn't.
We'll include me in that as well, just, you know.
Twenty seventh, the teams on this Thursday if you want.
Yeah, if you want to attend it too, yeah.
Okay, yeah, in addition to you.
Just so that you know, yes. Oh, and the Board of Directors orientation is March seventeenth and it's three hours. And it starts at nine in the morning. That is for cog.
Okay, and that's the seventeenth?
That is the seventeenth.
March ninth seventeen?
Don't they realize people actually work too?
Yeah, and this is, what was that, March?
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth at nine AM.
Yeah, that's Monday.
Yeah.
And where's that at?
Albany.
Albany, okay. And I believe you have to be in person for that one because you get a big binder and you get all your stuff to read through and everything and. It's Queens Boulevard, is that?
Fourteen hundred Queens Avenue Southeast.
Queens Avenue, yeah, southeast in Albany.
By time it or?
It's right, no, it's on, that's thirty fourth. Um, so Queen Avenue, yeah, you, you keep going down. Actually, you start there. But you go across railroad tracks, go across S turn, go down several blocks, pass up Little Caesar's. And it's between Little Caesar's and the next.
Okay, a little later.
Yeah.
So I used to work on Jackson Street.
Right, you're almost to Gary.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Cuthbertson. Okay, uh, moving on to, okay. I believe we still have four vacancies on the Budget Committee. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, I am declaring those Budget Committee seats as vacant and we need to fill them. So. Any assistance would be greatly appreciated.
And that, those, um, some of those seats are available to residents, correct?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
So if anybody here tonight wants to join. The Budget Committee, it'd be great.
What is our commitment for that? Just so that they know. I, well, I mean.
Every six weeksish?
Right away, yeah.
It's, okay, so it's really. Since we went to a biennial budget, it's really is a one time every two years. However, as we will, my recommendation here shortly.
Right.
Is that the Budget Committee convene again. To discuss what we need to do in order to reconcile and move forward. Which means that the Budget Committee needs to meet. So I would suggest that it's at no more than once annually.
Okay.
And so this time would be a shorter period. The one for the biennial budget would be a little longer. So you would have the same probably three or four meetings. Before it came to council again.
Since the counselor who was the chair of the Budget Committee or co-chair, I guess, the Budget and Personnel Committee is no longer on council. Do we have somebody in the interim who is the budget chair? Does it default to the mayor or to Counselor Cuthbertson?
It could be anyone you wish.
When we can come together, then we appoint somebody at that time. Usually when everybody gets together, that's when we vote and decide who gets to.
Great.
Have that privilege.
That privilege.
Trying to get people excited about this, you guys.
It's a privilege.
You were talking about pizza, right?
I'm pretty sure.
Pizza?
Yeah, we've hung out breadsticks from Benny's too.
We have.
Yeah, we'll work on that. We'll see what's in the budget. Okay. Yep. Okay, um, next up, uh, we, and I need to, I need to declare a park advisory committee vacancy as well. And someone resigned. So that is open as well. That is park advisory, I think, is what, every, every three months? I think that's the.
That's what we've been doing, but coming up. We may need a few more times just because there's some, some ideas coming down the pike. And there's some people that really want to do some volunteer. So I want to make sure that we can foster those opportunities for our volunteers to be able to do things.
Alrighty, are any of them eligible for being on the committee?
Oh, I hope so. Fill out the paperwork, turn it in.
We'll talk. Okay. Uh, next up, the same person that was on the Park Advisory Committee was also on Economic Development Committee. So I have a vacancy on the Economic Development Committee as well. So.
I can join that.
Okay, great.
And we're coming up on a meeting next month.
Mm-hmm, we are. All right, I'll put you down. Okay. And then next up, sadly, I accepted Counselor Winter's resignation from the City Council. Which will go in effect midnight tonight. So I am declaring another vacancy on the City Council. Oh, and all of these vacancies I've discussed this evening will be advertised on social media. So. And we will make sure it's all available on the city website as well. Okay, so. Do we have our candidates? We have next on the agenda here, we have a interview set up for one of the City Council vacancies. Is our candidate here ready to be interviewed? Come on down. There are interview questions in the back of the packet.
We're very casual. We don't bite.
You're hearing all of this. I don't know. I'm kidding.
Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and then we'll get started.
So my name is Brian Ray. I live at the north, most northern end part of town. I'm here on Eighth Street. So I've lived in town for about four years now, I want to say. And before that, I used to have a place way out in Hell's Canyon and. Lived in Springfield for a while and then moved back. I went to high school in Junction City, so I've lived pretty much within a power of this area my whole life.
Okay, great. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and dive in. All right, so I'll do an introduction and then Counselor Williams is gonna start with the first question. So, uh, welcome, Brian. Uh, the Monroe City Council would like to thank you for taking the time to answer our questions regarding the current council vacancy. Your answers will help us get to know you better and determine if you're a good fit for the City Council. Uh, for this interview, each one of the city counselors, including myself, uh, will take a turn asking you a question until we've asked all twelve questions. Uh, if you have any time, you need to take a break, a breather, a drink of water, let us know. But we promise not to totally, completely interrogate you.
Probably not any much different than at where I work for interviewing. Trust me.
A little different. Okay. All kidding aside, go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you, first of all. Um, first question is, can you please share a brief description of your background, including education and work experience?
Okay. Junction City High School. Work experience would be, well, I also have some, uh, education in. I went to four years of trade school apprenticeship, uh, Milrite. Uh, took my state test, uh, passed, got my card. Um, that was paid for through, uh, where I currently work. And appreciated. I currently work for a. Small company called International Paper. And in Springfield, and I've been with them since, uh, two thousand and seven. And before that, I was a. Auto technician, A C certified for about twelve years. And, uh, well, that's a long career. Obviously, little men, little jobs here and there before that, but.
Thank you.
Little bit of a drive down there. Every day.
Yeah, every day. Yeah, Forty Second Street. Please tell us how, about your involvement in community or civic activities that you've done. Uh, have you served on any other boards or committees?
Currently, when they have meetings.
Yep.
Is advisory on public works.
Okay.
As for civic activities, uh, was busy quite a bit in the last couple of years, put my own place in. Now that we're, I'm in, um, I am finding a little bit more time to do maybe something like this. We also do, I guess civic wise, I, we do the, I don't know if you heard of the little butterfly. Kits that they give out. I don't know if you've seen those or not. Anyways, our co- company allows us to try to get. I try to get fourteen of them and I donate them to the local school every year. So they get a little kit, little caterpillars, little butterflies, you know, that whole nine yards. This last year, I was able to get our company to donate, um, thousand dollars to the South Benton Food Pantry. So just trying to get my feet wet and involvement in the, now that I'm settled in the house, so in the community, so.
Thank you.
Okay, um, why are you interested in serving on the Monroe City Council?
Well, I'm, like you said, now that I'm more established where I'm at. Try to be a little more, as you can tell, be a little more involved in my community by doing a few volunteer things. And, um, I think I might have some. Good input on helping our community move forward and growing and not getting too big. We want to find that happy medium, you know? Otherwise, uh, we can't afford somebody like Steve.
All right, what unique skills, experience or qualifications could you bring to the City Council position? And how will your skills and, and knowledge contribute to the council's work?
So I guess my involvement was something similar to this is, um, where I currently. Where I am employed, we are also a union. So I've served on the union as a guard. I've served, I'm currently serving as the, um, recording secretary in our union. Um, I'm also a shop steward for our union. So I also sit on a planning committee for, um. We have a safety conference once a year in Portland and it's put on for pulp paper, forest product workers. And I sit on that committee as a planning member, so.
Counselor Winter, who's online, has a lot of experience with, uh, being involved in union committees.
So the next question is, could you please name three qualities a Monroe City councillor should possess?
Well, the first one comes to mind is obviously honesty. Need to be able to put themselves forward with the community and listen to the community's ideas. And, um, trying to come up with. Resolutions that benefit hopefully the majority. What was the other part? I'm sorry.
Just three qualities.
On, on the, uh.
That a Monroe City councillor should possess. I think you're kind of, you're, you're there, you're good.
I understand that some of the work you have to do out of international, I've worked at Pope and Talbot for.
Oh, yeah.
Quite a few years.
My, uh, ex-father-in-law used to work there.
Yeah, I think I remember.
Torrance.
Yeah. Henry?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know Henry. I was. His manager.
He passed a little, he passed a little over a year ago.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, I, I was wondering, because I haven't heard from him in a while.
Sorry, got me going now.
Sorry.
Henry was one of my favorites.
He was mine too.
If you could make one change or improvement in the city of Monroe, what would it change? What would that change or improvement be?
Probably, I think a city needs to be built up community involvement. So if we can get as many people involved in our community as we can, it helps the group as a whole.
I like that. Thank you.
That is. So important and so difficult. We, we would love that.
Where I work, if I can interject.
Yeah.
Even though I am the cer- a certified member right there, I am currently in a, um, special assignment. I'm the safety advocate, which. I have to go, which I enjoy doing. I have over three hundred employees on the plant site that I interact with. Not everyone. I have over three hundred employees on the plant site that I interact with, not everyone daily, but a lot daily. And of course, I take it very personal on the safety of them that I make sure that throughout their day or whatever may be going on through a project or, um, something being engineered or whatnot, that obviously that they're safe and that nobody gets hurt, everybody goes home the way they came to work, so. That's key for me, I take it personal, so.
All righty, uh, what do you believe are the current challenges and opportunities facing the city of Monroe? And pick one and tell us how you would address it.
Ooh, addressing it, well, it sounds like to me that budget's the biggest challenge of a small town. And addressing it is, you know, bringing in more taxes, which I know we all love more taxes, but it's an unfortunate, uh, evil that helps keep us running. But in doing so, you have to have more, in my mind, more, um, individuals living within your city. But like I said earlier, we got to find that happy medium to where we're not too big or too small. So we just need to be able to bring in enough and to take care of what we need to take care of and save, so.
Right, lots of planning projects coming up.
Oh, yeah.
What is your approach to making informed decisions on complex issues?
I guess I would have to say I would want to try to gather as much input and ideas from people. And, um, obviously, everybody's going to have a different, different opinion. And I think the key there is that we all listen to each other's, um, different opinions and, um, respect them. And then in doing so, we obviously come to a mutual agreement and like we're doing here today and voting on those items.
Great, thank you.
Okay, this is, this is a long one, bear with me. If you need me to repeat this at any time, please don't hesitate to ask. Do you have any interest in or participate in any professional or personal activity that could lead to or be perceived as a conflict of interest if you become appointed as a city councillor? If yes, could you please explain?
Well, that's a weird, open-ended question. What kind of act, you have to give me an example of an activity that might be questionable.
Have like maybe like a, a personal business operating within the city or?
Personal business.
For instance, as example would be if we.
I get, I get where you're going now. You know, I don't have any property, any business property investment inside the city limits. I have my own personal property, I don't plan on opening a business. I have a, I think a very lucrative career where I'm at with a good retirement, so. And insurance.
And, and if my understanding is correct, you can still have those things, you would just need to be able to recuse yourself from voting. So if those topics were to come up, so it's okay to own commercial property and still be involved on council. You just need to know.
Actually disclose.
And I would understand that for sure.
Like I, I own stock in a place and I have to disclose that even though it's hundreds of miles away. So, um, my question, I think this is going to be an easy one for you because being a shop steward, I know what kind of controversial stuff you probably feel it. Can you share an example of a time you had to navigate a controversial topic and how you handled it?
Well, as you said, being a shop steward, it can be quite conflictual between salary and hourly employees. So you tend to have to sit and be, uh, well, one individual I can think of right offhand that I've had to sit in with quite a few times. He refers to me as his lawyer. It's not a matter of trying to get them out of trouble. I think it's a matter of understanding and finding the root cause that got them into trouble. And then having those conversations with salary and the individual, and that way they both can come to a mutual understanding.
Making an educational moment.
Yes.
As a compensation analyst, I'm very interested in the salary versus hourly thing and I want to ask more.
Kind of new at it, being in this role for about two years. And so that's my, basically my job daily is that to make sure, try to alleviate that conflict between the salary and the union hourly. And I tell people I have to keep myself neutral.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter who they are, if I hunt with them or fish with them or whatever I do, I'm a neutral party. And that's all there is to it. We've got rules to follow, we've got, you know, for a reason, so.
It's more like exempt versus non-exempt.
Right. Eh, yeah.
It's tricky.
It's not always salaried exempt, though, you can be salaried non-exempt anyway.
Very tricky.
I'll be asking the last two questions, so. Hold on to your seat, okay. City council regularly meets at six P M. on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. And each meeting lasts about two hours. Uh, if you're selected as a city councillor, you are, you are also expected to chair or co-chair one committee and participate in at least two city committees. This is approximately sixty-eight hours per month of your time that you're volunteering. With your schedule, uh, would you be able to regularly attend the city council meetings, the work session, committee meetings? You think you could handle that?
So there are obviously ones tonight.
Correct.
So this is Monday, you said, how many, twice a month?
Two weeks ago, we, yeah, we had a second, the second Monday.
Mondays?
Yes, correct.
Just curious, I got union meetings twice a month too, but they're on Thursdays, so, no conflict.
Okay, good.
So.
The work session also.
Yeah, that's on the second Monday, yeah. Okay, and the committee means work will work out okay? They're, they're less frequently, they're kind of on a different.
So obviously, I'm still working for a living, my schedule. My schedule for the most part, I'm off at four thirty, so I can make these, um, it's forty-five minute drive. Um, my standard days off are Fridays through Sunday, so I work ten.
We generally, as a rule, we don't do anything on the weekends.
I hope not.
And we generally, I, we avoid Fridays if we have to.
There are events that we try to.
Yeah, there's events.
Well, yeah, if there's city events or something.
That's another story, that's like fun, that's like fun.
Like a hidden thing in there.
Like a Christmas light parade, you know.
Like when they have their.
Yeah.
Yeah, yearly thing here, the.
The festival.
The festival.
Yep, okay, that's.
Did I answer that?
You did, yes, you did, so, yes. Okay, last question. Oh, and my favorite, all right. There may be occasions when individuals residing inside or outside of the city of Monroe will take to social media and post negative comments, concerns, rants, or worse over, worse, oh, you know, other discussions and decision. They're basically ranting or raving over decisions that, in discussions that city council has made. Many times the posters are spreading misinformation and do not contact city hall, myself or any member of the city council to get the facts. As a city councillor, this is a two-part question, how do you handle this situation on social media?
Hmm, well, seeing as I don't do a whole lot of social media, it's gonna kind of eliminate most of.
Good answer.
Most of that anyways, I do not post on.
Okay.
I mean, I have friends on, but anyways, yeah.
Okay, that's good, I would advise that you don't. So part two, how would you handle the same situation as a city councillor? If someone, instead of taking to social media and posting that negative comment, concern, rant or whatever about city council, they came up to you, to your face in person while you were walking your dog or walking home from dinner? How would you handle that?
Well, hopefully, we would have a nice conversation. I deal with what I call, I don't use the words complaint, and that's what I tell people at work. I use the word concerns, they're sharing concerns, not complaints. So I think like, like I said earlier, my current position is taking concerns constantly. And, uh, we talk about them, you know, sometimes it takes five minutes, sometimes it takes an hour. I can't think of any in the last, knock on wood, last couple of years that have escalated in anything violent or I think the outcomes have come out. You know, they may not have be completely happy, but they understand, so. That's the key thing, it's just, you know, they understand they could still be unhappy, but they understand it, you know, that's how it is.
Okay, good.
Can I say from personal experience, it's really hard to not want to respond. And what I've had to learn recently is to just.
Listen.
Yep, yeah, listen to concerns, not complaints, but concerns, and then not respond since we are all supposed to respond as a unified voice. Like it's hard to separate feelings from our role.
Mm hmm.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
So in conclusion, do you have any comments for us?
Or questions?
Or questions?
Or concerns, a couple of meetings in here so far, so I kind of got a little bit of a gist how this is. I mean, it sounds like obviously there's a lot more going on than what I was involved in earlier.
We fight all the time. Yeah, right.
Would you like to know what the pay is?
I'm sure if I'm chosen and I will have more questions in the future, at this time, I do not have any.
Okay.
Questions for anyone.
All right.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, all right. All right, you're out of the hot seat for now. Okay, so we can talk about them now.
Oh, good.
Good answers, yes.
Okay, so we, we have two vacancies at this point. Hold on a second, need to point to my child.
The beans talk.
Yes. Um, anyway, we have two vacancies on the city council, um, so far, pardon me for a moment. Have a seat, stay a while, anyway, continuing. Anyway. So, um, so far, Mr. Ray has applied, we haven't had any other applications as of yet. I've been asking, I've been turned down once with someone else. Um, I don't know if anybody else has approached.
Uh, councillor Winter and I have approached somebody who has expressed interest but is not committed.
Okay, all right. Well, keep me, keep me posted, you were turned down too, I'm part of that club too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll keep moving forward. Mr. Ray was very kind, he answered all of our questions.
I think at this point, we can make a decision.
So too. Absolutely.
I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Ray as a councillor.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, all right. Any questions, comments before you guys? No, okay, councillor Linder?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Councillor Guthbertson?
Yes.
Councillor Myers?
Yes.
Councillor Williams?
Yes.
Councillor Winter?
Yes.
Okay. A little bit of drama, a little dramatic pause there, okay. Okay, so we, we can't swarm in tonight though, can we? We probably have to do this.
If memory serves, I got sworn in two seconds later, so I'm not sure.
Actually, you, you can.
Just has to get you the paper.
Get you the paper, that's all, that's.
Right.
Isn't there a spot? Get a spot.
There's a seat right here.
Yeah, come on.
Come over here.
Yeah, you can, you can absolutely sit.
Put on a phone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Am I swearing in or are you swearing in? Or is councillor Guthbertson swearing in?
No, you do it, you're the mayor.
You swore me in.
Well, somebody had to.
Nice, okay, appreciate that.
Well, I was mayor for three and a half seconds, I had to do it. I know, right?
Let's see, if I can actually find the, find the script.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it was just like in January.
Just like in movies, someone who says, I state your name, you don't say state your name, you say your name.
You wish, I, it would take me about three minutes to get it.
Yeah.
Would you like me to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Then I will excuse myself.
We're taking a brief pause for station identification.
We don't want to give him an opportunity to rethink it. Right under the chair, my goodness. Oh, yeah.
I think Steve goes, yeah.
Um, yeah, how am I going to get that to you? What's going to work best? Your phone number, okay, hang on just a second, let me, um, put my glasses on and find my notes page.
You'll be offering this again, because I'm going to be out of the country on that particular day, but I'm very interested.
Yes.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay, your name. Michelle. L E or L L E? Okay, okay, and then your phone number. Uh huh.
Nine seven nine.
Uh huh. Perfect, and then I will, um, do you text, do you get? Okay, so I'll take a picture of the event and then send that picture to you. And then, um, you'll have my information too, but yeah, I think, I don't know if my friend's putting it on or what, but they have a group with the long Tom Grange people over there. And they've been really working on emergency preparedness and stuff. And so if you guys can kind of get together, that would be really great. Yeah, any kind of collaboration and making it all work.
Councillors.
Yeah.
You could spare us?
Yes, that'd be awesome.
What, are you going to make an airplane?
No, we're gonna make a. We're gonna make them a sussy.
Oh, I love it.
I'm gonna let you write your name and everything on it.
You're fast.
Moving a little too quick for me, I think.
Oh my gosh, they had me voting and I went, I've been there like two seconds. And they're like, yeah, we think she's good, okay, swear her in.
Yeah.
My husband's texting going, how did it go? And I'm up there going, I can't answer you, I'm voting. Okay, I gotta make sure I spell his name right.
So I.
Do we, we want both names, right?
Right, right.
I can't spell that, it's R A Y, right? R A Y, right?
Yes.
Fell one last time and only just could. I saw about a year and a half, maybe almost two years ago now.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I lost my.
Look at that, wait a minute.
I can't write handwriting on it yet. Oh, I could have, I don't know what I was thinking.
No, this is good, this is good. It's perfect. He did it better than I would have ever done it. You have great handwriting too, it's very legible.
Thank you, I didn't even put my glasses on, I should have. I, I didn't write councillor on it because we haven't swear daddy yet.
Swear at him, yeah.
No.
Okay.
He actually retired.
Poor Steve. We want to do it right now.
Chomping at the bit, what can I say?
Just to have the seats full. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, he just came out here about a year or so, year and a half ago. It's been a while since you.
I was a buyer.
Did you get that thing that I sent you that I was talking to Michelle about with the disaster thing? I think they sent it to you on the Facebook thing.
Yes, I think I did.
So just because I know we've been talking about it, I know that there's that happening, so it was worth mentioning or if we wanted to throw it on the website or whatever. Yeah, I know, but at least that's something going on in the community for people if they want to.
The West Coast and change pronunciation.
Look into that.
Understood.
So, and they might be good to kind of partner with too as we move forward.
Yeah, definitely. They kind of take over things. I thought it was Chinese or something.
It is, it's, it's a cascade poem, but it's the Chinese, the Chinese on it.
I can't hear you. In a while. No.
You probably knew, uh, Steve Murphy.
I can only go as fast as these people.
They ended up, he ended up leaving, went out on a medical.
Oh, did he?
His, is it knees?
Gone. Oh, that sucked.
There was a lot of guys and I'm trying to remember all their names, but it's like.
Well, that's better than getting a boat and paddling home.
For sixteen years.
Right.
There was twenty-five thousand people where I work, yeah, yeah, so. You know, and when.
That's finish up mayor.
Sergeant of arms.
We'll have the planning commissioners come over here and wrestle you down.
Commissioner?
Yeah, calling from across the street, yeah. Come over, sit on you.
I'm going to see a list of all.
Kids, they're great fun, aren't they?
Four-legged ones.
Yeah, well, we have those too. And there are days.
Oh my god.
Both-legged, two-legged.
My brother's kids call me daddy too because their DNA is exactly like, I show up as their dad.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. You guys are twins, so.
Yeah. Yeah, identical twins with identical.
And that list for empty nest thing too, huh?
Yes. Funny empty nest. I live by myself. Nice quiet.
To do whatever you want.
Don't need no spectrum. I got me. I know when I was getting all my, you know, year ago, a couple of years ago, whenever I was getting them, come out and they were, you know, marking the ground and everything so I can get, don't cut lines and whatever, you know, telephone come out. He's like, you wanna put a line in? I'm like. Not gonna insult, nobody uses a hard line any, I don't use a.
Oh, I do because I have to, I have to plug into the.
Yeah. Are you out?
Well, no, I mean, it's like, it's just what they offer here in town. I have to connect to the wifi through a landline.
Yeah. And it's, it's kind of like seventy-five bucks for twenty-five.
I need something I can take with me when we travel.
Spectrum was offering.
You have to set it up. And then I thought, well, you just point it south like a normal dish. See somebody wandering around out in the yard. And it shows, it shows you where your optimal.
Okay, we're reconvening. We're gonna go ahead and.
Pictures or should we take pictures?
Yeah. So you gotta, alright. Nah, you're, you're in a perfect crime location for it.
Boy, did you tell him he has to give a pint of blood?
Hi, Ryan Ray.
Hi, Brian Ray.
Do solemnly swear. I'm sorry. Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I support.
That I support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And of the charter.
And of the charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinance.
And rules of procedures.
And rules of procedure.
For the city of Monroe.
For the city of Monroe.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honorably perform.
And uh, and honorably perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
For which I'm about to assume.
For which I'm about to assume.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go, sir, right there. Yes, I do.
That's the next one.
I know.
There you go, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I took pictures, so there's proof.
Yes, we're doing business now. Yeah.
We're zooming.
Yeah, we're zooming. Yeah, we are. Okay. All right. So do we have a council packet that we could? Those packets flying now, boy.
There's a spare one there already.
So the second page is.
That's yours.
Oh, 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 hey. You got packets flying everywhere. You're good. So you are here.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Old business. Okay. New development update, and I'll have Steve take it over.
Um, okay, so at this particular point in time, I signed off on the review, signed off on Serge's civic national developments. Twenty-six unit permit, DEQ. So that is um, their next step then will be coming before planning commission with their plans and for subdivision to finish off the uh, twenty-six that this is the area between Eighth Street, Ash and Ninth. It's that big field that's in there. Just to kind of the southeast of, south, yeah, southeast of Torrance property. And so they're gonna be putting twenty-six units in there. Uh, I also spoke with Roche, Ross Boshler. He's the gentleman who owns the um, twelve best North Saniam paving. They own the twelve acres to the east of Red Hills between East Red Hills and Dragon School, elementary school. They gave me their preliminary plans for that area. And we also are putting in a sewer. There as well extending a sewer up to property. This is you approved the sewer extension last meeting. And so we planned that, so it goes right down the street that they'll be using as the extension. So that's sort of been coordinated with them and they gave me the plans and the um, dimensions of that, so it fits, will fit very nicely there. I have plans on my desk right now for Mr. Bound's Kelly Street property. That's the multi-family apartments that I also have on my desk. The preliminary plans for the, and actually the, the plans for approval for the um, twenty-three units going between Mill Street and Oak Street. By the mayor. Is that what we, what we have known as the Kathy Loving property? Uh, so all of those are on my desk as we speak today. Mr. Rose got his partition. Uh, papers, so he's gonna, he's building on Eighth and um, uh, Main Streets. He wanted to partition his property so he can start building a home for himself and his wife there. And the last up is um, Mr. Oaks and his five unit partition uh, decision papers. And that's going out this week.
Where is that one located?
That one's located by Counselor Myers' house on Depot, at the end of Depot.
Okay.
So those are all, all in process right now. Everything that I just did, the, the one that's at probably the tail end is the twelve acre between Red Hills and between, and Dragon. But all the rest of them are in some level of process of either being finished and ready for building or shortly some sort of development going on. Everyone's interested in moving those developments forward. The big issue, of course, for us is um, you know, the expansion, those will, with the exception of the twelve acre property, which we, it had, we're still in discussion phases now with that. With, with that exception, the others do fill up our current water plant capacity, if you will. Not making changes. We are in the process right now of putting in extra, as you know, extra filtration units and things to handle the capacity. I need, I still have not done the analysis of timing in terms of shift work. Right now, we are running and will probably be running this summer. We have um, our utility one worker working, Chuck, working earlier in the mornings, that suits him. And then Mark finishes up in the afternoon. So that does, we, we can overlap that way and uh, and run the plant ten hours a day if necessary. Right now, it's if we run long, it's simply because the water is cold and we can't run the plant as hard as we can in the summertime. Of course, in the summertime, people use water. So we're still running the plant um, longer. So these are considerations as we move along. That I've been talking also with Chuck Schultz. He is our DRC for this, for the city and, and also a very valuable font of knowledge with his twenty-five years of engineering. So we've been particularly on the wastewater side of it, so that we have a good handle on how that's supposed to progress so that we, we can upgrade that and maintain it for uh, an increased population. Yes, sir?
A little question on the water agitator that we were looking at.
Yes.
Is that gonna be done in time to help these?
Oh, it's gonna be done here. Actually, we're, we have electrician going up there this week. And uh, then it's, it's, we're just waiting on that and it's scheduled to go in place.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, very quickly, as a matter of fact. I want it in place so that by the time we get to our May and June DPD, we have that and we'll get that as our first example of what that does.
Okay, good.
This is the aerators?
Yes, that's the mixing. Yeah, so, so both the mixing and a aerosol.
Yeah.
So it both mixes the tank and then it sprays water out like a little water fountain, but it's inside, of course.
Okay.
And.
Do we have to put aerators on our ponds too, though?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, on the lagoons.
Yeah, the lagoons.
It, it, once, once we get about more than fifty homes.
Four in here. But that's about fifty where we're gonna be. That's not including.
Fifty-six homes is what we're looking at right now. Not, not including that area to the east of that, which is about another twenty homes.
Okay. So that's gonna put us at capacity.
It will put us at capacity and at that point, it, as it stands right now.
Okay.
So, you know, at that point, you need to look at, for instance, we have the red, the Brickyard people. Now, I did talk to them and they're revamping their hundred and twenty-three units they wanted to put in. I simply explained to them that, thank you, however, that's a lot of units and we simply don't have. As I said, it's not just, it's not just water and sewer at that point. It's police, it's fire, it's other things that we have to deal with as well. And it grows the city, I think, beyond its means.
Yeah.
That we can handle at the moment. Although they do intend them to be separate tax lots. That's a good thing. There is a point where you reach it if you don't start mixing commercial in, commercial activity, business in with your residents. Then you don't hit that sweet spot very easily. You spend more money than you do on maintaining. As I talked, you're gonna need three or four public works people and you may not have the, you know, the revenue from your water system. Then you have to raise rates for everybody else to compensate for it.
And then we're just a bedroom community without a destination for people to come.
There's no destination. You really do need that economic development to tail in. However, as we've also learned that you need to have just enough people, somewhere around that twelve hundred to fifteen hundred, that businesses will, will say, yes. You meet our, you meet our criteria, your demographic is what I want. We'll, we'll come in and build that raised market. We'll build those different things.
Provide a market here.
Right. So lots going on.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to even imagine how the Brickyard could get developed with that many units without it becoming a sinkhole. I mean, it's already a sinkhole.
They would have to put so much dirt.
Yeah.
I think as Economic Development Committee suggested be much, a much better arena.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're gonna need, I think we figured uh, three months, solid months, four trips a day for one of those double tandem dump trucks. To fill that fourteen foot deep in the middle.
Crazy.
Yeah. Alright.
One more, one more item, just because I want to make sure that it's in there. I will be going to the planning commission Monday and talking about our expedited UGB. Now, there is a process for that. And it's not necessarily easy process, but I have to get their permission first. Then it has to come back to you. Once it comes back to you, I can file with the DE, I can file with the, with the um, the DLCD. So they want your permissions before they get it. That's kind of the first step with it. Otherwise, once it goes beyond that, we have to have some public hearings. And then it had, then it comes back for final approval. So really, from their viewpoint, getting fifty acres into your city is, yes, you need to show there's a need for it, but it's more about you saying yes. The planning commission concurring, basically. You saying, yes, we concur with the planning commission and also having public meetings. At least one, but they want, would prefer two, but at least one town hall or something that says, yes, we have engaged the community. And they're on board with us as well. Or these, this is how we're going to address weather issues. Once that happens, then the UGB gets expanded. It doesn't necessarily mean anything at that point until it gets annexed.
Right.
So then you have to go through the annexation process on top of that to actually say that that land is now zoned and, and available for, for building. So it's kind of a multi-layer process. But this expedited UGB is something that was just passed about a year and a half ago. The rules are available, but there are several, it's a multi-step process to put it in place. We will kick that off this next week.
And am I incorrect that we were actually going to trade land so that the, the acreage or the mileage, square mileage wasn't changing? We were just kind of swapping?
That was the original intent until the ex, until a year and a half ago, this expedited UGB idea came forth. What they want to do is make, if this is approved, the next expedited process, then twenty percent of it needs to be, twenty percent of the development, not twenty percent of the land, but twenty percent of the development needs to be affordable housing.
Okay.
Now, I'm putting that in quotation marks. I don't exactly know what that means. But it needs to be affordable. Now, I'm gonna say that that's probably rental units. If you go through South Corvallis and.
Oh, yeah.
You case, just after the school, you see the big complex, affordable, that was part of the South Corvallis Development Affordable Housing.
Okay.
Initiative. So that's what has to be done. We would also probably put a master development in with that as well, so that also accounts, that also puts paths, parks, you know, green space, open space in with that planning initiative as well. Uh, but that would be for the developer. Initially, uh, we just are simply bringing it into the, expanding the UGB. Um, and then at that point, we go through the annexation process and then a developer will take it and give us their plans just as they have. Then we have to also deal with, you know, infrastructure and all those pieces.
Is there interest in that?
High, high, high interest.
Okay.
Both, uh, so both specific national development, um, North Saniam and Randy Myers of Brownstone have all said they would be very interested. That's highly developable land out there. And the county commissioners last I spoke were on board because of the issues with the septic.
Right.
Coming down the hill.
Yeah.
So the, and I, Red Hills is also, particularly those on Tenth Street, are also highly interested in having city control of that, so. I just want to let you know that we are beginning, we've talked about it a lot, um, and everyone is essentially on board with moving forward with it. So it'll be to them, then to you, then to public comments somewhere in between. I've spoken enough with the DLCD to know that it's not that onerous of a process, but we do have to follow their guidelines.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's development.
Okay.
In a nutshell.
A nutshell. It's a big nutshell.
A large nutshell.
Yes. Yes. Okay, next on the agenda is city administrator position update. Um, Counselor Lindner, did you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll start it. I think that we've got the position description dialed in based on the last feedback that we received from you about the city recording function needing to be included in that PD. So I feel pretty confident that we have a description of work ready to be posted once we figure out this budget piece that you mentioned earlier tonight. So I think that probably dovetails into six point three supplemental budget hearing unless there's something else I'm missing, but we're ready to post. We're just waiting for the funding info. And, and that's a complex beast.
Yes.
Anything you wanna?
Fred, the, and I, yeah, Counselor Lindner has been sharing that with me throughout this process. So um, I believe that what's posted is, is quite, you know, it fits everything that is needed from a city administrator.
And thank you for helping us write it because you.
Not a problem.
Shared with us what was needed, so.
Like I said earlier with us learning, you know, with like dawn learning trial by fire, that was me too, so. You know, you, you learn a lot doing this process. Uh, so the second part of that is, you know, of course, is, you know, figuring out the budget.
Yes.
So that takes us to six point three. We need to have a hearing, public hearing.
My suggestion is, my recommendation to council is to hold a budget committee meeting, even if that at the moment is the council. Um, and whoever else you can, and so it, it could, the, the budget as a whole can be discussed. Certainly, while I can provide that third person or second person to public works, you know, and perhaps it'd be nice to be here for twenty years. That's probably not in, in the, in the projections. But so what we need to do is find out how that's going to work. And the mayor and I have talked a little bit about it.
We have.
There, there are options available to council, but they, but I think the first step is probably to sit down. There there are options available to counsel, but they, but I think the first step is probably to sit down with the budget. And find out what we actually have and how we can make that work and what. How can it be molded to make it work, you know, maybe sometimes we look at things this way. And in reality, if we look outside the box a little bit, we can find another set of alternatives that will beat exactly what you're after. Without going backwards, you know, but still try to move ourselves forward.
What kind of notice do we have to have for that meeting?
For a budget committee meeting, I believe that that is.
Attend.
Since, yes, ten days, I I'm trying to think, the supplemental is different, this would not be supplemental, this would not be a supplemental, that might come from that. This really is a ten-day notice, this will be the same as what we're doing, we're sitting down and convening the budget committee for the purpose of not of making a new budget. For the purpose of examining the this budget and finding out how it's supposed to.
So that would be ten days, but staff needs to compile information for that, correct? Timeline on that, cuz that's gonna be.
We, that's what we've been, I've spent, we we have spent almost all month up to this point today doing that. So we are at this point ready to proceed. Yeah, we we're fine, actually, that was the goal, was to get it done by today.
So should we? Should we make an agreement to post it tomorrow for ten days from then?
I believe it's ten calendar days, I'm gonna double check on that to make sure, cuz this is a little unusual because we're in a biennial now. Not in a annual, so let me make sure, but I believe it is ten days. But if you say do it, I will post it and then I'll come back to you and say, here's what we have. So if we look at calendar wise here.
Thursday, the sixth.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, so the sixth would be the first day that we could have it. If I policy, don't, excuse me, tomorrow, one, two, three, four, you can count the day that you post it, that's the first thing. Yeah, six would be the very Thursday, the sixth would be the first day and then anytime after that.
I don't know what everybody's availability is for March sixth.
Uh, I've got a vet appointment for my two dogs late in the afternoon, so I might be late, but I can attend.
You'll have to bring the pizza, sorry. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Kidding.
Wait a minute. All right, anybody else have a conflict there?
I'm good on this.
I am too. I think so, mine is so.
What about you, new council?
I never know.
I'm at Gosh Conference in Portland that week, so. I come back the sixth, but I don't know.
You could also always hold it on the tenth on your work session as well.
Let's do that instead.
We'll, we'll have things ready for you.
Okay, very good.
We can talk real fast.
All right, so that's gonna be our budget committee meeting, which will be on work session night.
Are we doing it before the work session or after, or just sort of?
Junction with, should we have the budget meeting and then have the work session, or how how would, do you think we should do that?
I think you should probably start with with the. Maybe go through your updates, which should be fairly quick.
Okay, so the work.
But then, but then go right into it, because this is. This runs your city. You have some really critical things to discuss, understand and decisions to move forward, which may impact everything.
Okey dokey, sounds good, okay. All right, John is here, can you give us a quick eleven thirty-five dam project? Damn, dam removal project, dam project.
We can second guess everything, so. Congratulations and thank you. Yeah, so real quick, eleven thirty-five project, it's back on track with all the funding and the agreement signed again. They had a, the meeting was scheduled on the eleventh of this month. I think, you know, a quick update is kind of the activities currently under where underway. The Army Corps is currently surveying all the culverts that connect or do not connect, or nobody knows what they do with the slews at this point. They want a good understanding of the culverts. Contact with ODOT engineers have been established, this relates to hardening the piers, so that work has begun, so they have a good understanding what's required. In the specs for making that happen. The longtime watershed council has a, is prepping and getting ready, in fact, may have gone already an RFP for. The Water Intake Engineering Group that will design the water intake. I did share with the current group of engineers, all of the city attributes that were discussed with the advisory committee and presented here. Many of those are outside the scope of the project, but it's important that they have those so they can, as a certain designs, they can start looking at, at least not how to. Make it more difficult, but also create the foundational work for those. There, we we had a discussion of the need and kind of how best to bring forward to this body, the kind of decisions have to be made as you go forward. I'll need to sit down with the mayor and and city administrator to to kind of figure out best to do that. The recommendation or suggestion was made that at the thirty percent design phase, that's kind of preliminary, but it's a good time to kind of look at the overall design. Both the Army Corps design and the water intake design should be done at about the same time, so we can understand how those mesh together. And that might be a good time to take, take, take a moment to do a deep dive into what it looks like and what the design is. There'll probably be a few decisions that the city, the council will have to make in order to be factored into the thirty percent. One of those right now is whether the city is interested in retaining the head wall on the east side of the river. In the feasibility study, that was, so it would be left there, but as the engineers work on that project, they raise questions of safety. It's a very, kind of a, well, it's only a very steep drop and be quite, quite a far drop. And then how to stabilize the riverbank there and how to accommodate things like easy access from that side for, for people to get close to the river. So those are decisions, that that's one example of a decision that we should provide to the Iron Corps while they're working on thirty percent. There may be a few more of those, so I'd like to work with the mayor and and look at. At like, when do we bring advisory committee back together and. And can we bring some of this information forward for these specific decisions, and if it makes sense to. You know, really schedule time at thirty percent to do a deep dive into what's what's being proposed and see how the water intake and the project kind of meshes together. So very preliminary, but those, that activity is underway and things seem to be moving.
It was skipping six dot five and six dot six since we had, now we have a Firewise. Event going on, are we okay with skipping those on the agenda?
Question, six point five is more than just fire, though, right? I mean, it could be other things too.
Actually have a crisis management plan draft ready for you.
Oh, excellent, awesome, thank you.
I thought I'd hand that out after work session for you to review.
All right. Have we heard back from Gomburg's office on the DEQ update at all?
No, but I did hear that the Courtney Brown, the person that was handling it for the state, has moved on to something else.
Surprise.
She got an email from Mr. Musk, I don't know. So we have a new lady who emailed me last week asking me about it, and so I responded and said, well, this, we have talked to Mr. Gomburg's office. I haven't heard anything back yet, so we're still in communication.
Okay, well, I am gonna be at the Capitol on Thursday, my daughter's part of a home group and their group is going to Salem. We're gonna actually, we have an appointment with Representative Gomburg and we do have one with Senator Anderson, so.
Check, check in, at this point, we are talking to a new.
I bet he knows that, but.
Okay, there might be, but the more DEQ.
So we have a new contact person now, okay. All right. Yeah, I think I'll take six dot eight off the agenda after this month, but I just wanted to leave it on there, it's about the lodging tax, there was some confusion. Just to clarify one more time, it's a tax only, the tax only applies to short-term rentals under thirty days. That's all on that.
And we are signed up with the inter, with the Oregon Internal Revenue Service to collect those taxes.
Okay, great, cool, okay. Okay, I'm gonna go down to section seven, city events and other happenings, right now, the only thing that's on the calendar is the festival. Right now, it is slated for Saturday, October fourth. There's an email address there if anybody has any inquiries about the festival. Beyond that, other business, we'll jump down to committee reports, we just talked about budget, we're gonna. Looks like we're gonna have a committee meeting on the tenth of March, so there's that, economic development will be next month on the twentieth. We don't have a personnel and finance meeting scheduled, I don't know if we.
We should do that, we can do that after this meeting.
Yeah, okay. Ordnance, don't have anything scheduled at the moment, parks and public works.
Nothing scheduled, but I'm hoping that we'll start up again in like March.
Okay, sounds good, library negotiations, I don't know, I think it, we can probably. So, all right. Okay, and then our city council work session will be on March tenth, which is when we'll also have our budget committee meeting. So we're down to eight dot two, counselor comments, any counselor comments? Counselor Winter, I'm gonna put you on the spot, sir, this is your last, this is your last city council meeting, sir.
I'll miss all of you, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you all for the opportunity, I will be moving back to Monroe in a few years, but. It will be a few years, so, thank you, if you need anything from me, feel free to get in touch and I'll see you all soon.
Thanks for all you've done.
Thank you for all you've done and best of luck with your future endeavors.
I thank you very much, the best to all of you as well.
Yeah, thank you, take care of yourself.
Good comment, it's nice to see a handful of people in the crowd tonight, thank you for being here.
However, we gotta get him here.
When people come to the meeting.
Any other counselors with comments?
I was gonna say, thank you for, everybody for hanging on with us. Late night already, so.
Congratulations.
A lot of ketchup.
Not a problem, I don't have any comments, I've talked enough tonight, Steve is the only one that talks more than I do, so. Okay, if there is nothing else, we are officially adjourned. All right, good night, everybody.